You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford.
Okay, we're going to call the Board of Selectment meeting for August 19th to order. Okay, all right. Actually, first, I just want to make, if we can make one correction on the, let's see what number it is here for bid, item number eight, I'm sorry. One correction, the request should be award the contract for the purchase of four tires, including scrap, road service, and labor to JTTs Tire for the total cost of $16,800. Can I get a motion to make that adjustment to item eight?
Motion to approve.
All right, remove the second, all affairs.
Aye.
Item one, to consider and if appropriate, approve the minutes from July 1st, 2020, July 8th, 2020, special meeting, July 22nd, 2020, which was also a special meeting.
Second.
Move, second, any edits, comments? Changes? Very nice. Hang on, where? All right. You know what? Is yours on mute right now?
Yeah, I got it down.
Not the volume, but are you on mute yourself or no?
Nope. Trying to see if the light here, it should be off.
All right. All right. Tristan, can you hear me? Are you just getting it up or somebody else?
Yeah, I can, I can hear you, there was a little bit of feedback though.
All right. Hang on one second, folks.
I'll try to hear off the air.
All right. Apologies.
Raise.
All right.
When I mute Ray, when I mute you Ray, then it sounds okay, but when you're not muted, there's a problem with the feedback.
Okay, can you, can you hear me right now without feedback? No.
No, it's still echoing.
Uh, yeah, trying to shut it on. How about now? Yep? That covered it?
Uh, I think you're okay.
I don't know. All right, can you hear?
Yeah, I think you sound fine now.
All right, we'll just try to, can you, you actually, can you hear?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear Ant.
All right, we can barely hear you now. All right. Turn up the, maybe turn up the volume a little more. Oh, you know what? Let me mute this. Turn up the volume.
Turn it up?
Yeah.
Good.
Can you hear?
Yep.
Do the best we can. I'm able to hear anyone. All right, just for the record, this is actually, we have an in-person presentation. We were allowing the continuation of people participating through Zoom. So if you are going to speak through Zoom, then please state your name for the record. All right. Item two, to consider and if appropriate, approve an amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement for Animal Control Services dated February 9th, 2005, between the Town of Branford and the Town of North Branford. This pertains to the animal shelter, we changed, basically, it will now be net, the Town of North Branford, just to sum it up, pays 30% of our expenses, it'll be net of revenue, such as fees from animal camp and such. I think Jim Finch attached a letter that he had sent out, a cover letter to this effect, explaining this agreement, done, Town of North, and their last council meeting. All right, any questions regarding this? All right, any motion to approve?
Actually, I have a question, please.
Sure.
So, what you're saying is that the Town of North Branford pays 30% of everything involving the animal shelter?
Correct.
Okay, now, the question I have is, that we all realize you have a project coming up that's going to look for approval, if I'm not mistaken, I think I heard that North Branford will not participate in the approval process until after it is approved, and then they'll pay 30%, or they may pay 30% of what the project cost is. Am I understanding that correctly?
No, the current agreement is they will pay 30% of any of our costs associated with the, with animal control services here at Branford.
And that includes the expansion of the facility?
Correct.
So, are they going to participate in the approval process?
We've had, we've had discussions, we've informed them of this project, we will go do, we will have a presentation informing them of the, of the project in detail after it goes through Branford for the finance.
Be honest with you, I'm not going to belabor this, but I have a little bit of a problem with that, given the fact that I would imagine that the citizens of North Branford want to see where their tax dollars are going before it's already done. I mean, why wouldn't you open this up to the citizens of North Branford to participate in this, given the fact that they're going to be funding 30% of any expansion?
Yeah, so we provide essentially a fee for service for them. So I appreciate your comments, but.
I don't understand that, I mean, I don't understand a fee for service, in other words, you just.
Yeah, so we, we offer a service which they want to participate in, and this is the agreement that we took place, so we don't go through, when we, we adopt our budget, we don't go ask approval for the budget when we need to.
I get that. What I'm asking is, now you're asking to pay 30% of roughly a $3 million project, so that's not a fee for service, that's a fee for capital expense, so.
Capital expenses, can somebody please shut that door, because they got their volume up. Uh, yeah, so that's the agreement.
It's not the agreement. Again, I mean, I'll take this up with the Board of Finance and the RTM, but I don't understand how the citizens of North Branford are going to pay a million dollars towards something they have no say in, it's all after the fact. I don't, I don't understand that.
Okay.
And apparently you don't either, because you have no answer.
I just explained it to you, you're more than welcome, you have the agreement, I'm sure.
You did not explain it, you did not explain it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? All right, hearing, all affairs say aye.
All right.
Item three, to consider and if appropriate, approve request from Police Chief John Mulhern to donate the watch guard body cameras to the East Windsor Police Department.
He's on Zoom.
Oh, Zoom, sorry.
He's logged in.
All right.
Good evening, John Mulhern. Captain Dave Galdenzy, the Branford Police Department, was having a conversation with Chief DeMarco from East Windsor, and their operating budget is, isn't able to sustain such a purchase, and their capital items were denied, I believe. So, they're requesting, they do have some of the backend of this system that would be compatible. For those of you who don't recall, we are migrating away from this product, we're going to a cloud solution that myself and IT vetted, with that comes new equipment. Some of these cameras are at the end of useful life, some of them need some batteries, some of them are still functional, but for a PD that lacks the resources in this day and age with what we're facing and some of the requirements coming up, I think it's a great reuse of these items that we no longer have any use for, to get them started in this complex process of rolling a program like this out. So I do request respectfully that we do grant them this, because if not, we, we don't have a use for them, they'll sit in a box and we'll end up in electronics recycling bin somewhere.
Great, thanks, chief.
I'll move it.
All right, so move, move second, any discussion?
Question to the chief. So chief, are you saying that these items have no value whatsoever?
You have to have the backend equipment to take the data off of them, you know, you can turn them on and they will capture, but there's nowhere to put it, so once that camera is either full with, with the video, or it's out of power, there's really, you know, for, you know, public use or an outside use, you need the backend. This PD has this system with their in-car camera system, so can migrate into it. To put a value on it, I think it's difficult with the depreciation, and on top of that, it is vendor-specific in the sense of who you feed it to. So, in our example, we're going to the cloud, it's an Axon Body Camera product, specific to that, so there's some, it's backend as well as hardware, but for us, from a system implementation standpoint, there's no operational value. I don't think you can really sell these on eBay, I haven't looked, but I don't think that there's a true value, they've met their, their life expectancy.
That's, you know, so just out of curiosity, is this the type of thing that's usually done between departments? Do they look to help each other out when, I've never heard of this, but I haven't really been paying a whole lot of attention to it.
Yes. Unfortunately, it is, and I've been on the other end of it, where you want resources and the municipality maybe doesn't have the, you know, the ability to provide them, and yes, I've donated in dispatch equipment, donated vehicles, so, hey, when you, when you're in need and, you know, what, what maybe we don't need anymore, and for us, it's, you know, for them to try to implement a system, and when I say that, it has operational impact, so to get a test run, to see how they like it, to get them ready for a future project and a future major project, again, these are costly projects, I think it breathes some, some breath into these old items that can be reused for a little while, and get them on their feet, so it is, Wayne, it is common at times, yes.
I think it's a nice thing to do, thanks, chief.
Okay, so any other questions, discussion, hearing, and all affairs say aye.
Aye.
Item four, to consider and if appropriate, approve the following resolution, resolve that the, that the Board of Selectmen may enter into and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate, and further resolve that JHB Cosgrove, as First Selectman of the Town of Branford, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Town of Branford, and to do and perform all acts and things which he, she deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including, but not limited to, executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. This resolution is necessary to apply for the Demis Omnibus Rant. Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll move it, this, this is a yearly requirement from the state.
Move, move the second, discussion, hearing, and all affairs say aye.
Aye.
Thanks. Item five, to consider and if appropriate, approve a request from Fire Chief Thomas Nohoney to permit the trade-in of two 2009 LifePack 15 cardiac monitors, serial numbers 38166609 and 38166634, towards the purchase of two replacement cardiac monitors approved as part of the FD capital budget. Chief?
Thank you. We, we purchase, just about annually purchase LifePack monitors, these are the cardiac monitors that do a lot, monitor the heart, we can do 12 lead EKGs that help us determine whether someone's having a heart attack, and also provide vital signs and provide a shock if necessary. They're very, they're kind of essential to what we do every day as paramedic service, we purchase about one a year, and the town charter requires us to ask your permission to trade in any, any equipment or dispose of any equipment. So that's what I'm here to do tonight, we get about approximately a 50% off when we do trade in, when they, when they run these, these types of specials. So these, these are both 2009 monitors, their lifespan's about 10 years.
Moves, Selectmen Dunbar second, by Selectman Higgins, any further discussion? Hearing, and all affairs say aye.
Aye.
And just for the record, going back to the animal shelter, and I believe it was, was it Selectmen Dunbar made that motion to, for the Intergovernmental?
Yes.
And Select, yeah, Selectman Higgins second. All right. Got a message. All right. All right, item six, and I just, actually, before you leave, chief, I just want to thank in your role as Emergency Manager Director, I think you've committed a job with this last storm, and I just thank you for you and the harmony.
We don't have a shade there, do we?
Yeah, we do, yeah. Item, to consider and if appropriate, approve a request from Brian Devlin, Superintendent WPCF, to waive the bid for on-call pipelining services. I believe Brian is participating via Zoom. Brian, are you here?
Yes, Jamie.
Okay.
Yeah, Brian Devlin, Superintendent of War Force Control, we had a trenchless utility rehabilitation, last month, we had three bidders, but what this is, is we're not, we don't have projects, I looked into with the engineer uptown, John, and what it is, we wanted to have the three bidders on standby, on call, if we need work, and we have it in the contract that they, whatever lowest price is on different projects, we can use either three of the bidders on, according to the contract. So I'm just asking to make sure I can get three of them on a contract for on-call, in case I can't get one in an emergency situation, I have a choice of the other two, and also the price availability, I have a choice on the contract which one to use. That's kind of what I'm here for.
Yeah, thank you, Ryan. Actually, for the benefit of the, the other two, Selectmen on this board now, in the past, there's been a couple of incidents where we had issues and we had to do emergency repairs to some of the sewer mains, when they had collapsed due to corrosion, those would be emergency repairs, and the previous superintendent would come to us after the fact, and we would go through and waive the bid in, in order to cover that expenditure. After we had a couple failures, we did do a lot of videotaping of a lot of the lines, and kind of rated their current conditions and started to develop a plan to address these relining, these areas that need to be relined. In doing that, we issued an RFP, which we essentially soliciting unit prices based on size of pipe, type of pipe, to be relined. We had three bidders that are qualified, responsible, there's various pricing on per foot, so what we'd like to do is have all three as on-call vendors, depending on the particular situation that we have, we can then evaluate, and we have, you know, the pricing to repair that particular line, and have them come in and do it. So, we're not negotiating pricing after the fact, we can then selectively, based on our budget and the need, address a lot of these relining issues that we need to throughout town. I did talk to, a couple years ago, Greater New Haven Wastewater Pollution Control, not necessarily for relining, but for some of their sewer work, went through a very similar process, where they have a list of on-call contractors to address this, and they have various prices, so it seems to be like a program that's worthwhile and a benefit. So, that's what we have before us, and actually, just very quickly, keep moving, but I know we had, a couple months ago, we had a couple vendors that we have placed for various work as on-call vendors, and I think Selectmen Dunbar asked about going out to bid, and we would follow a similar process that we did for that, those bids. So with that, is there a motion to approve?
Make the motion to approve.
All right, move by Selectmen Dunbar, second by Selectman Higgins, any further discussion? Hearing, and all affairs say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Brian.
Thank you very much.
Your crew did a great job too. I just want to acknowledge Brian and his crew, out there throughout the night, for several nights, pumping down all those stations that had no power during the storm, so thank you, and to you and your crew.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Item seven, to consider and if appropriate, approve a request from Gary Zalinski, Supervisor Department of Public Works, to waive the bid for the catch basin cleaning for services and award the contract for Shawback services in the amount of $43,000. Eric?
Yeah, we did Shawback, Shawback, we've had Shawback work for the town for the past several years, although they are not the lowest bid, American Pipe, catch basin, the lowest, but they're not able to perform the work in town, they've been booked for solid throughout the years, so Shawback actually was 60 cents lower than their, their own state bid, they've been working with us for quite some time, they want to stay in town, and they, they're very familiar with the town, and would like to keep.
All right, so if I, it's a difference of, they're going to, Shawback will do it for $21.50 on catch basin, the state bid is for the $20.85, so a difference of 65 cents, 65 cents per catch basin, but you think, this contractor is, we've had him before, they're in town, when they come in, they do all the catch basins, they're, they're done in a timely manner, which we're required to do per MS4 permit, and have those completed by a certain date. So for the nominal difference, it's in the town's interest to award to Shawback. And I believe, how many do you do, about $3,000 a year?
Yeah, close to $3,000.
Okay. All right.
Motion to approve?
Selectman, Selectman Dunbar, Higgins?
One second.
Second by Selectman Dunbar, any further discussion? Hearing, and all affairs say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item eight, to consider and if appropriate, approve the request from Gary Zalinski, Supervisor Department of Public Works, to waive the bid and purchase of four tires, including scrap, road service, and labor, for his John Deere 544J loader, and award the contract to JTTs in the amount of $16,800.
Yeah, we priced out four new tires, for the transfer station, and the next lowest price was from Barnwell House of Tires at $24,219.99. JTTs has given us a really good price, and actually, we called out to one other vendor, but they never got back to us, so we'd like to purchase these, it's much needed for the transfer station.
We need a motion first, I ask.
Yeah. Make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Selectman Dunbar, second by Selectman Higgins, go ahead.
So, Gary, with this one here, you actually solicited bids anyway, of quotes.
What's that?
You solicited quotes for these tires.
Yeah, only because we knew it was going to be a high-priced tire.
Right.
It is the lowest bidder, yeah.
Right.
But we just.
We go through, our ordinance requires us to go out to anything over $12.50 advertised, so we're waiving that formality, the year, yes, we did go out to a bid, it was just, it was not an advertised bid, solicited multiple price.
Right, so I mean, it was due diligence, that's fine, thanks.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing, and all affairs say aye.
Aye.
And Gary, I want to thank you and your crew for the tremendous job, a lot of compliments by the crew who are still out there doing the cleanup. I know many residents appreciate the long hours that the crew's been putting in, and you know, after the storm, throughout the storm, after the storm, and continue to do so to clean up, so thank you and to the crew of Public Works.
Yeah, thanks, Gary.
Item nine, to hear a presentation around the Clean Energy Ad-Hoc Committee on the 2020 Branford Energy Plan, and if appropriate, accept the 2020 energy plan as presented. Okay, I just want to, the Board of Selectmen created an ad hoc committee, the Branford Clean Energy Ad-Hoc Committee, a year ago, a little over a year ago, and this committee was essentially, advises the First Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen on different initiatives, to, clean energy initiatives, and really, to not only initiatives that the town is contemplating, but also, those who may not know, the state does set certain goals, and they have some goals to meet by 2040, in meeting with this committee, after they were formed, and we were talking about some different projects, as I'm sure many of you know, the town in recent years has taken on a, a number of clean energy, sustainability projects, but we had asked them, one of the things I asked them to do is create a, create an energy plan, is really, how are, you know, different ways and methods that they can evaluate that we can actually achieve the goals that the state has essentially adopted. And so, for several months, the committee has evaluated where the town is currently, looked at, you know, various areas, everything from infrastructure, transportation, to not only town, town buildings, but also just town-wide, really, and essentially, put together a plan, which are, you know, that really.
but they never got back to us. So we'd like to purchase these, it's much needed for the transfer station.
We need a motion first, I ask.
Yeah. Make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Selectman Dunbar, second by Selectman Higgins. Go ahead.
So Gary, with this one here, you actually solicited bids anyway, or quotes.
What's that?
You solicited quotes for these tires.
Yeah, only because we knew it was going to be a high-priced tire.
Right.
It is a lower bidder, yeah.
Right.
We just...
Our ordinance requires us to go out to anything over $12.50 advertiser.
Right.
So waiving that formality. Yes, we did go out to a bid, it was just it was not an advertised bid, solicited multiple price.
Right, so I mean, it was due diligence, that's fine. Thanks.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing not all, favor say aye.
Aye.
And Gary, I want to thank you and your crew for the tremendous job, a lot of compliments by the crew who are still out there doing the cleanup. I know many residents appreciate the long hours that the crew's been putting in and you know, after the storm, throughout the storm, after the storm and continue to do so to clean up. So thank you and to the crew of Public Works.
Thanks, Gary.
Item nine, to hear a presentation around the Clean Energy Ad-Hoc Committee on the 2020 Branford Energy Plan and if appropriate, accept the 2020 energy plan as presented. Okay, I just want to, the Board of Selectmen created an ad hoc committee, the Branford Clean Energy Ad-Hoc Committee, a year ago, a little over a year ago. And this committee was essentially advises the first selectmen, the board of selectmen on different initiatives to clean energy initiatives and really to not only initiatives that the town is contemplating, but also, those may not know, the state does set certain goals and they have some goals to meet by 2040. In meeting with this committee after they were formed and we were talking about some different projects, as I'm sure many of you know, the town in recent years has taken on a number of clean energy sustainability projects. But we had asked them, one of the things I asked them to do is create an energy plan is really, how are, you know, different ways and methods that they can evaluate that we can actually achieve the goals that the state has essentially adopted. And so for several months, the committee has evaluated where the town is currently, looked at, you know, various areas, everything from infrastructure, transportation, not only town buildings, but also just town-wide really. And essentially, put together a plan, which are, you know, that really outline different action items. It's really a guide for not only the town, but the community to really achieve those goals. And as I said many times, you know, when we evaluate these different projects, certainly we look at the environmental benefits, we also look at the financial benefits, and on the town side, we look at how will this improve operations or delivery of services with a number of different projects that we have taken on. So with that, I will now turn it over to Greg Ames. I know we have a few members here, Sheldon McCarthy, Bob Cap, Elena Cahill, and Greg will lead the presentation. With that, I will just also make an introduction. We do have a position that was recently, it was a current position, we expanded it to the Sustainability and Compliance Manager, Diane Burkey, who is here with us tonight, who will be part of her role in overseeing, you heard me mention earlier, the MS4, some of the compliance mandates that we have pressed on the state, but also will be staffed to oversee many of our sustainability efforts that we have town-wide. With that, Greg, do you want to walk through the plan?
Great, thank you. This is Greg Ames, President of Branford, here with my committee on behalf of the Clean Energy Committee.
To share everyone, share with everyone our proposal for an energy plan for Branford. This probably amounts to about a 15 or 20-minute presentation. We do want to do questions and hear people's thoughts when we finish, because essentially, we're here to share the ideas we found and what we've learned with the community. Use this planned proposal to begin a community discussion about energy. With that, I think I would like to read the committee's mission statement, which goes, "In order to improve public health and lower energy costs for the town and its residents, the Branford Clean Energy Ad-Hoc Committee works to meet or exceed the state's greenhouse gas emission reduction targets by increasing both energy efficiency and the use of renewable Well, founded about a year and a half ago, became apparent to us pretty quickly that we're going to need a plan to guide our actions, to make sure we get to where we want to go, where we all want to go. Started that plan with a basic goal, simply 100% clean renewable energy by 2040. Pick this goal for several reasons. It aligns with the state's mandate, it aligns with other towns. The plan we're going to present to you is not atypical. It's very similar to what's happening in towns and cities all over Connecticut and New England. And importantly, the plan responds to the 2019 Branford Plan of Conservation and Development Call for Action. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Bill Horn, who's with us on Zoom. As Bill's been on both committees and can explain the importance of the continuity of this plan with the Plan of Conservation and Development. Can we get Bill on?
Peter, Greg. For the record, Bill Horn, 26th person. As Greg said, I'm a member of the Clean Energy Committee and I also worked on developing the recent revision of Branford's Plan of Conservation and Development, or POCD, together with several local business owners, members of the Planning and Zoning and Economic Development Commissions, and other respective members of the community. The revised POCD was adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission in 2019. The process of revising the POCD involved multiple public meetings and surveys. There was strong community support for maintaining or increasing the town's efforts in several areas related to resource protection and sustainability. 70 to 80% of those surveyed called on the town to do more to promote energy efficiency and renewable energy. There's a new POCD, Section 12, for the first time in the 2019 plan, to promote sustainability and resilience. And it calls for the re-establishment of a Clean Energy Committee, which the Board of Selectmen did a little over a year ago. And it tasks the committee with addressing several specific energy-related issues. And the current draft energy plan that the selectmen are considering tonight is the first step in responding to the POCD's call of action. So for that, I'll turn it back over to Greg.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
How about you start? Go through this plan, obviously, there's an awful lot in here. We'll try to hit the high points, the things that we think are going to be interesting and significant to you, without exceeding our time limit by much. We started by researching how we use energy in Branford. Oops, wrong slide. Hang in with me, guys. New computer. Researching how we used energy, we found two big categories. You look at the little circle down there on the bottom left, you'll see a red and green segment, which occupies almost half the pie chart, therefore occupies almost half our energy use. That's the energy devoted to heating and cooling buildings by oil and by gas. Big user. The other big user is transportation. That's the blue circle and the blue segment on the left of the circle. That also accounts for almost half our energy use. So those are two things we decided to focus on. One of the things we found as we did our investigations was that energy is already getting cleaner. We're on the way. Solar has been ramping up as the costs drop. You look at the chart on the right side on the bottom, that shows solar over a period of seven or eight years, growing very slowly. People begin to understand how it works, the price begins to go down, and look at how that line climbs. Solar is rapidly, rapidly increasing the portion, the proportion of energy produced in Branford. And now, in addition to that, we're going to find wind, offshore wind, coming online, providing a big segment of our power. So it's getting cleaner, guys. The next question becomes, how are we going to get to 100% renewable energy? And if you bear with me, there's another chart here. Look at the chart on the left side of the next slide, there's a red and a dark brown segment on the left on the bottom, that represents energy, energy that we use. The left side of the chart represents today, the right side of the chart represents 2040. The energy use declines, if you look at the blue line and the gray area on the top, we're anticipating that we can make the energy use decline by some 50% by 2040. And while that's happening, if you look at the two segments on the bottom, the dark brown is climbing, that's the use of renewables. The good news is that the red, the big segment that takes up almost all of our chart today, gets to zero by 2040. And what that means is we stop burning stuff, stop using fossil fuel. So, reduce consumption 50% in 20 years? How are we going to do that? First off, we increase the energy efficiency and building performance in the town, starting with energy audits that find opportunities to save energy. We'll use, we'll transfer to things like LEDs, increased insulation, weatherization controls, we'll reduce consumption, save energy, and in doing that, we're saving money. You're going to see that theme throughout here. What we're proposing to do is going to result in a lot of savings. We're going to find and access incentives. There's a tremendous number of programs at Eversource that will help the town, the residents and the businesses make these changes and incorporate these enhancements. We're also going to help people find state and federal tax rebates and tax credits. You say, how does this happen? I want to point out what I think is a really good example. The town of Branford entered into an energy conservation contract with Honeywell, a little more than two years ago. With a year's worth of effort, the energy consumption by the town buildings, municipal and school buildings, is decreased by almost 30%. It's like halfway there. I think that's indicative of what can be achieved, and I think our town deserves a lot of credit for that one. Next step to reduce consumption, electrify heating and cooling with high-efficiency heat Now, when I say high efficiency, I say that deliberately, because these are not your daddy's heat pumps. Heat pumps today are efficient, cost savers, down to zero degrees, they function down to minus 15. You forget that, the technology that wouldn't go all the way in our climate, today, we can use it. Doing this, we replace fossil fuels with electric energy, and remember, that electric energy is getting cleaner every year. The efficiency of these devices lowers the consumption, generates more energy savings, and generates more cost savings. Couple of examples, heat pumps are already in use, saving the town money at the fire headquarters and at the community house. Your Clean Energy Committee is working on a heat source residential program to acquaint people with and help them, help them obtain residential heat pump systems. This, if you're heating today with oil, propane, or electric resistance, you have the opportunity to save money by making this change. Go back to converting to renewable electricity. Sun and wind, that too is happening now. Locally, the Tabor Solar Field is lowering town electricity cost, providing electricity for the town equivalent to what it would take to run some 125 homes. On-site solar program, an onsite solar program that we're initiating with the state Green Bank will do the same by adding solar energy on school buildings and the community house. Again, saving money by going to clean energy. There's also going to be a solar option that will tack on to the HeatSmart program that I just described for you, to help people tie in their own clean energy with the heat pump system. And not locally, but remotely, offshore wind is on the way. On transportation, transportation is also electrifying. There's energy, and again, cost savings and environmental benefits from driving electric. The town is starting a transition in town vehicles to electric vehicles. We're looking at doing the same thing with school buses. School bus is an interesting one, because it raises the issue of health. One of the things that attracted us to looking into this subject, I guess I should be on the transportation slide, huh? One of the things that attracted us to looking into this subject was the knowledge that kids are being driven around in a can full of polluting gases with the internal combustion engine and exhaust. Moving on to electricity, that's gone. That's just one example of the tremendous health benefits we obtain by converting our society to clean energy. We're also pursuing charging stations, we've encouraged by discussion, several retail developers in town who are only too happy to add charging stations to their developments. Plan will also look ahead to modernizing the electric power grid, complicated issue that's embryonic right now, and is going to require a great deal of development and study, but offers some great promise. We're not there yet, I just want you to know that we're reserving space in the plan and in our projections to look into that, to make it part of what we do. So, all said, this results in an action plan, and I'd like to share some of the key points of that action plan with you. After a couple of years, almost, what have we learned? Learned that this is all very doable, and it's doable not with deprivation, not with people doing without things, but with savings, with comfort, with better health and with a cleaner environment. We've learned from the examples that I've talked about tonight, that that change is already underway. We need to understand that the public sector, that is, the town buildings, the school buildings, and its other town activities, only account for some 5% of the energy use in town. So achieving these goals requires a community-wide effort and participation, which in our mind, will require continued public sector leadership to show the way. I can go back, I can refer you to the Honeywell Project, Tabor Solar Field, the electrification of town vehicles. I think it's our job as a town to lead the way and to help the community see the opportunity that exists for them here. And this can be an inclusive effort. It can work for everybody in the community. So in closing, I'd like you to look at this as a starter plan, a plan that needs to evolve, be updated regularly and often over its life, what a lot of people call a living document. It needs to respond to changing technology and changing economics. Who would have thought that today we'd be looking at solar and wind energy costing less than oil, coal, and coming to parity with gas? Plan needs to evolve, be updated regularly and often, to incorporate community input and participation. Show, we're here tonight to share our ideas and what we've learned, because we believe that now it's time to hear from the community, to start a community discussion about energy and to make this a plan that belongs to all of Branford. So finally, we submit the plan, asking for your support and for the support and help of the Branford community. I don't know whether any of my committee members have other things they'd like to add at this point. If not, I think we open the floor to questions.
Thank you, Chris, for your presentation. We'll open it up for questions or discussion, if anyone has anything they would like to ask the committee, the members, do you have something ready or no?
No, I guess at some point in time, the discussion should be what, this is a great, great work. It took a lot of effort and wholeheartedly, I think it should immediately get sent out somehow to the town.
Well, yeah, and that's what I think, you know, follow up on Greg's comments about, this is really the beginning of a public discussion, this is the beginning of us moving forward. And as I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, that this committee is an ad-hoc committee of this body, the Board of Selectmen. So this is the work that they've done and they're ready to go and really engage and move forward and fully recognize that this is a living document. With that, I would like, I envision us accepting this, and that's where we could then, I would post this on the town website for overview by the community. We would then, as we had always planned, this committee is going to be this committee is going to be in a series of public discussions. And certainly, the energy plan would be a topic of discussion. And I expect my, what I had always envisioned is that this committee will return on a quite regular basis to update this body on the progress that they're making. So again, that's what I was, excuse me, was hoping for tonight. And by the acceptance of this body is really to start the process of a discussion on that is really a plan that is brought to us.
Comment? Part of the advantage of Zoom is that you get to go to meetings that normally you wouldn't go to. So I just happened to drop in on this Clean Energy Committee by chance, and I became aware of this by chance. And the more I heard about it, the more concerned I became. Now, with all respect to Mr. Ainge, Mr. Horn, the First Selectman, you're kind of going about this backwards. You don't do an in-depth plan based upon the one perspective that a basically skewed committee comes up with and then bring it to the public. You could be, in my opinion, you bring it to the public, you bring it to the residents, you bring it to the businesses first, see what their thoughts are, see what's going on out there in far as thinking goes, and then you formulate a plan and then you can continue discussion. But you did this backwards. You can't do it like this. This is wrong. Particularly when you're dealing with a committee of seven or nine members, whatever it is, all of whom are like-minded. They all think alike. They all feel like man-made global warming is the only thing that's happening out there. There's no room for any other perspectives. And they formulate a plan based around that central concept. Well, the central concept, quite frankly, is controversial at best. So now Brantford, you got ready to, and I'm pretty sure you're going to adopt this because I'm sure it's in the works politically, you know, that's what you're thinking. But you're adopting a plan that in many people's minds, maybe even most people's mind, is fundamentally flawed. So I don't see how you do that, quite frankly, without putting it in front of the community first. Now, to be honest with you, you know, Mr. Horn speaks about the Plan of Conservation and Development. Well, that's another one. I'm very aware of how that process works. And that's another skewed process where you have basically a committee and a commission and everybody that has pretty much like minds. So that, yeah, you know, even that got public input, but then they go behind closed doors and they do what they want and they come out with a plan and by that point, people are, you know, checked out. Well, that's wrong too. My point is for this plan to be credible at all. And I said to the committee, and they can all attest to this. I said, this may be the best plan that ever was formulated for energy in any community, anywhere. But if you don't bring it before the community first and get the public's, you know, input first, well then, what you've done is wrong. It's just plain wrong. Now, I'll listen to any, you know, other people's perspectives, but that's mine. I think this should go back. I think it has to go before the RTM. Because let's be, let's be really honest about this. The reality is this, that you say, well, the plan's not binding and the plan's a god and the plan is a living document. Not really. Because this plan's going to get in effect perhaps tonight and it's going to sit there and not many people are going to revisit it and it's going to become in essence, policy for this town for decades to come. And that's wrong because you're starting off wrong. Now, I'll open it up. I think we turn back for a comment. I think it's that important, but I'll open it up for others because I like to hear what they have to say too.
Well, thank you for opening it up, Charlie.
If I may, I have a comment if I'm allowed to speak, please.
Sure, state your name.
Carolyn Sires, District Five Representative. I have a few comments about this plan and about the process. I'd like to see the survey that you have, the high percent of community support. What I learned about this plan, starting on Monday, I went around the district. I don't know of anybody here in my District Five that was asked to take the survey. So my first question would be, please direct me to the survey so I may review the survey statistics that show the majority of the Brantford citizens agree with this. Next, you are talking about fiduciary responsibility because you said the fleet of cars and the buses will be converted to electric. I don't know the person, I'm on the phone, who gave this report. I also feel it was more of a slap in the face education where you said, everyone must do this, it is our responsibility to do this. It is a leader's responsibility to do this. Well, as a leader newly elected in District Five, it is my responsibility to first canvas the area. To talk about this right now and mention Eversource at a time where they have doubled and tripled the rates is not going to go over well. And I'm going to give you a comparison of what happened in California as two people I know are in different counties in California. Right now, in the two counties, because they're having black and brownouts, because they went to solar and green energy, they now are looking at alternatives because the neighborhoods are being asked to use the power after dark at different times. What we just went through right now with this hurricane, with four and five days off, I don't know if any elected official is going to want to go around if we do this and tell the neighborhoods or the buildings, you can use your utility after dark at this day and you at another day. Because that is archaic and going backwards, not going forward. If you can show me a cross comparison, year by year, for fossil versus solar, and I'm talking a seven-year plan like you're talking, I've only heard a seven-year plan for solar. I want a year-by-year comparison of fossil versus solar. You need to sell the people on this plan. As once the town adopts it, it is going to look as though the leaders of the town support this and that it is a foregone conclusion, we're going to have to do it. Next, you mentioned tax credits. Well, that only depends on what administration is in office at the time. And that changes every four to six years. And this is a long-term plan. So you may get tax credits, you may not. This is a very speculative plan at best. It does mention fiduciary responsibility. Therefore, the RTM in the town should be discussing this before it gets adopted. I don't understand why it would be adopted first. We're talking about a very sketchy problem with Eversource right now, which is not favorable toward the citizens. We're talking about, I will get you the statistics on California, where they are now looking to go to alternative energy sources because the people are furious that they have to take alternate days because these certain towns are all solar and all green. So there is, this is just far too speculative for a wonderful town that does always due diligence, which is why I'm proud to be from this town, to throw such a plan out there and ask the public to comment on something. I think it doesn't do service to the people who have done a hard job putting this beautiful plan together. But it is absolutely a one-sided plan. And the people on this panel, no. I've worked with Shirley to save trees. I work with Mr. Horn when people are dumping in the wetlands. I am a very big environmentalist, but I'm also a realist. And this is a plan that whoever presented it was more or less telling us, if you don't do it, then you are not doing your responsibility. I don't believe that will sit well because I believe the people of Brantford do a wonderful job conserving energy and they know how to do it without being scolded about not accepting one. And to tell somebody if they don't accept this, they're not doing their responsibility was what was implied by making that comment. So I don't know that I could support just adopting this because it clearly does imply there's spending with this, there's changes with this. And again, to the Board of Selectmen, shouldn't we look at this survey first and see who did support this instead of being told that the majority of the town of Brantford and businesses, I wasn't asked, people in my neighborhood weren't asked, and we're from a pretty large district in this district. I just think, I don't, why the rush? When we just had a hurricane with energy problems, with Eversource problems, with the media talking, we're all about California now with the brown and blackouts, how they have to go alternative energies because they converted so much to wind, solar, and green that now they need to find other fossil fuels so that people are able to be on the grid and do their energy and do their work. Those are real statistics that can be proven. They're not speculative. And I do agree with one thing. Once the town adopts something, your average citizen, unless everybody knocks on doors and tells them, is going to think this is a foregone conclusion and we're going to go to electric buses, electric cars, and we're going to be spending the taxpayers' money. It's not the time right now, maybe in a month from now. But I still think there's much more to research from the leaders that I respect, the three Board of Selectmen that I respect. Let's look at the survey. Let's see who was surveyed. Is it a skewed survey? I mean, come on, statistics could go either way. I can write this report with statistics tilted toward fossil fuels instead, but I would like to see a middle-of-the-line a report from somebody who wants to do the fossil fuels. If we're truly saying we're looking at the town as a whole, then we have to look at both sides. We cannot just use one side and say this is the way to go. Especially if we're saying it's a mandate it's going to be. Politics changes. We get elected, we get unelected. This has to be done for our taxpayer. It has to be done, and I'll say this forever. Think of their money and what we're asking them to do. We're speculating Eversource is going to help. Did I see something today where a person got a $1,000 electric bill in Representative Scanlon's district? A thousand dollars for two people? And you're going to try to fight Eversource? No, I don't want to be on a plan that we're fighting because we speculated in the wrong direction. I please ask for a bilateral report that we can all look at and more than just a committee looks at. I think the elected officials and their communities need to look at this. We all need to come together, the community. My plea to the First Selectmen, if you're taking this on as a community project, why in fact are we only having it one-sided? The community is much more than just one side. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, yeah. There was a lot there, just so I think the survey that was cited was not done by, it was not part of this committee or this report. It was the, I think they were citing the survey that was done through the Plan of Conservation and Development. And so certainly, the Planning and Zoning Commission can share that, or the Town Planner can share that survey, if you can get you that. Feel free to send it an email requesting that. To clarify, I don't, I think what was emphasized is the fact that this is not a mandate. This is not a declaration, this plan. And I think the committee and what this board, I'm asking this board, is to engage the community and to have a discussion. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to review the plan. And you know what, I think I would rather hear comments, hopefully there's comments specifically to the plan rather than individuals. I mean, we should be evaluating the product. Quite honestly, I think, you know, that's what we as elected officials should be discussing and engaging the citizens to look at the product and evaluate that, make decisions, make comments and recommendations based on the product, not really on the individuals. And that leads to dysfunction in government. We want to see that. We can see that on the state and federal level, quite honestly. I actually think this is timely in terms of what we just experienced with the storms. When I look at, you know, going through this plan and the consideration and taking a look at and really what is, how could a microgrid help us in address some of these things? I spent a weekend over there by a rice terrace. I mean, you had a small area that was essentially out of power for days. And I know that was throughout town, but you have senior housing, a grocery store that many people in that neighborhood depend on essentially. Well, perhaps a microgrid, maybe something as a community start looking into those types of those types of solutions. And that's what we want to engage the discussion. The animal shelter was out of power for, I think, close to seven days. Perhaps that's a viable location for a type of solution that's being presented. And this is what we should be doing, is having a discussion and evaluating. And this is, as I said from the very beginning, and I think the presentation touched upon, this is the first step. This is the beginning of publicing.
First Selectman.
So, excuse me. One person, on Zoom, one person has to talk, so please wait till you're acknowledged because others can't hear.
Quick comment and then I'll, you know.
No, I'm finishing.
You got it backwards. You know, in all honesty, you got it backwards. You don't do a plan and then open it up to the public. You open it up to the public to be the plan.
All right. And this is
Amen.
Hold out, hold on one second, please. When you're talking about the plan, and again, I think you have to look at what this is. This is an ad hoc committee put together, a framework, a plan, which we can then engage the public discussion. This is not, you know, a Plan of Conservation and Development. This is not a Hazard Mitigation or Coastal Resiliency Plan where you then have the public outreach and that is a statutory required document and they have to, and basically is updated every five to 10 years. This is a, this, please, please, can you, please, I just asked that you just hold off. I let you speak, you can just wait. So that's where I don't want people to get confused of what this is. So when you say this is adopted and it's a mandate, this is, that is not accurate at all. That is not the intent.
But the point is
Jamie, this is
You're going about it backwards. I don't understand how you could think that you could put this plan out there and then just go and ask for people's input. Why didn't you do that first?
Okay, thank you. Linda Erlanger, I believe, has a
Yes, yes, hi, this is Representative Linda Erlanger from the Third District. I appreciate everybody's comments. I first want to applaud the Clean Energy Committee. These are Brantford citizens who volunteer their time and their expertise to, and did this in an effective way to develop a plan that the community can respond to. And, you know, I've worked in business for a long time and it gives the citizens of this town an opportunity to say they agree or disagree with how we move forward. I'm going to just politely disagree with Representative Sires' comments about California because we are not California. We are, we are a community of 30,000 people. This is a community for the plan. We are a microcosm and a perfect community to test out and to live in a clean energy environment. And we have the opportunity to do this. And I think to Mr. Cook, to you and to Representative Sires and to anybody else who disagrees, I think we have an opportunity to respect what the First Selectmen is saying and give the plan a chance to be heard in the community because nobody else has put anything else forward to move us into a renewable energy place. And I'm sorry, but I have to again applaud the effort of the Clean Energy Committee in putting something forward that the community can respond to. And I thank you for the time.
Here's the point though, Representative Erlanger. Don't vote on it then. Don't vote on it. Just put it out there as is. Let the community respond to it. Let the community, you know, have input on it. But don't vote on it tonight like it's okay with the Board of Selectmen because to your point, Representative Erlanger, it should not be because it's not complete yet. It's not complete.
Well, I think that, Mr. Cook, if you listen to First Selectman Cosgrove, that's what he's saying. He's saying that the First Selectmen will agree to put this, if they agree to this plan, they will put it forward to the community. The RTM will not be voting on this without input from the community. And I asked the First Selectmen to confirm that. Thank you.
Why vote on it at all? Just asking, why vote on it at all? Just put it out there now.
As I stated, just to be clear, that this committee, this is a creation of this body. And so therefore, I thought it appropriate to bring back to this committee to then review the plan and is this an issue we want to put out there? As we've always said, this is a living document. I use the, I reference I use the, I reference the Plan of Conservation and Development, the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Those are statutory requirements. A municipality needs to do those. A municipality does not need to do a energy plan. I think there's tremendous value in this and since this body, since, you know, I'm often criticized by you, Mr. Cook, from acting unilaterally, I, you know, bring it back to the body that created this committee and get the support. So us as the Board of Selectmen are in favor of us moving forward with an energy plan. And this is the framework which we can then build off and begin public discussion. I welcome any comments. I welcome input. With that, I think Selectmen Dunbar has a comment.
So, you know, I've spoken to many of yous throughout the days and trying to figure out really what we were doing tonight. And I think based on the presentation and what I'm hearing, I'm looking at this unless I stand corrected, and that's why I'm putting it out. I'm looking at this as the Energy Committee was a subcommittee. They went out, they did their job, they brought it back to us for review. And I take it as any vote we're having tonight is not a binding that we're accepting that this is the gospel. I'm taking it as, yes, we like the work you did. Now put it out to the public so we can get their input. That's how I'm getting it. And if I get a commitment from people here that that's what it is, I think, I think Wayne in some respect that takes care of what, some of what you're speaking about, and I had the same concerns about, you know, openness and transparency. But I think it'll work that way. That, I truly do.
I'm going to let other people speak, but that's not how it's working. I'll come in at the end.
Representative Sires, if I may, if speak, it's Representative Sires again. My, my one comment again is then the committee is malformed. If it is only going to give one input, why is there not a committee that will also give a comparison to fossil fuel? As the other representative had stated, as she is in business, always in business, you take both sides. You never take one side. So I'm not, as again, the people on this committee know me well, and I reached out to them many times for help for conservation. I'm not objecting or I'm not subjecting. I'm saying a fair and balanced, and if we're going to have one side, then why wasn't a committee of like-minded comparison folks formed for both reasons? I'm just speaking for the town in general, not as anybody who is superlative and knows everything. And my comment with California is, it isn't the state. They were two small communities in California, not the entire state, that are looking for alternatives because they're progressive communities that have people who had to work from home that were unable to because they went all green and they had to make choices once it got dark, who was going to be able to use the electricity because they did not have enough during these ground and blackouts. It was small communities, not the state of California, and they could be extrapolated as they were communities like our beautiful, small community. And I'm not opposing or disopposing. I just think that more dialogue should have happened in both ways because I do know, once this is voted on and adopted, is the majority of people who are so busy and crazy with everything going on are going to just say, oh, the town already accepted this. How then is the Board of Selectmen going to move this forward for community involvement when the Board of Selectmen gets very few people at their meetings? Are you going to allow these committees to, what is your plan to further community involvement? And I don't mean by this committee because I have not been reached by them. How are you going to plan to move this forward and make me comfortable that there is going to be involvement by the community in larger scale? This is going to affect everybody's wallet. No doubt it's going to be a financial effect for people.
Representative Ingraham.
Actually, if you just, please pause for a second. Please wait until you're acknowledged before speaking because then others on Zoom cannot hear you. Selectman Higgins, you had a comment?
Yes. Yes, I'd like to.
So, thank the committee, the sad hot committee has done a tremendous amount of work.
It is just, if, as I understand this correctly, this is a, just the beginning. It's a very minor step, if you think about this. The state is setting forth requirements as we go through to the year 2040, if I understand this. So now we are just beginning to look at what if, what style, what are we going to do? What are we, what do we as a town envision for energy? This is the wave of the future. We all know it's coming. Reliance on fossil fuels and coal, and of course, electricity, our grids, our main grids in the country are deteriorating as we speak. I don't know if many of you knew, but back in the 70s, when we lived in New York, there were two major blackouts for days and days because the major grids were really not working well. So, no one is saying that this is the absolute only way we are going to look at the problems of energy renewal. We are just asking to, for this wonderful committee, what they've done so far is bringing some of their thoughts and ideas forward so that the public then can digest what they've put forward and answer or question or not, not, not support certain things, let their feelings be known so that the selectmen, all of us, can then listen, evaluate, and go forward from there. We are here for the town. We are here to do the very best we can for our town. And that's really all I want to say, but thank you very much.
I have one question.
Do you have a comment?
One second, please. I want to ask one question for Selectman, and he can ask the chairman of the committee. Do we in fact, based on, what, what does the committee really need us to do tonight to go forward with something that we've already said is non-binding and it's really informational? And do we need to take any action tonight or can we just say, thank you, go forward to the public with our support, but without a vote? Because that seems to be what the big stress is over. Or do you need something else? I mean, we've already said that this is, it's a, it's a great document. You did so much work. You're going to be bringing it to the public. Can you not bring it to the public without us taking an official vote? That seems to be up for debate as to what we're really approving or not. I take it as, thank you for your work and please go forward and educate the public and get their input, which is what I think people are asking for, which I believe by talking to some of you. And on doing further, obviously they didn't go to all your committee meetings, but is that something that's workable or do you need something else tonight? Because, I mean, I, I don't think we're going to get any consensus. And I truly do want you to go forward and present this to people, so.
Now, just to clarify, this is an ad hoc committee created by this body. So they need direction. And that's what they're looking for, direction. Is this something that, you know, they, they've worked on this plan, they've, I mean, those who have reviewed it, we've all complimented on the work they've done so far. They need some, some validation that they continue to work on this effort, which, and I think that is the responsibility of this board, which created this body, to give them that direction. By organs, they're not created, they're not created by, you know, again, there was, this body created them. So we need to give direction. And as far as the comments about those who would, you know, would like to be involved, I welcome that. I've sat before this, when we put names forward before, we put it out there, this, if you're interested in participating, and please put your name forward.
That's, you know, that's completely inaccurate. Excuse me.
I think Ray Ingraham had a comment.
I did. Thank you. Thank you. I sent a couple of messages. You know, in processes, I mean, in business, in governmental bodies, if you send a subgroup out to go out and do a bit of work, they come back and present to the boss, section leader, or the committee that, that sent them to say, hey, this is what we put out. Is it okay to go to the next step? So there is an expected vote or acknowledgement. I don't, you know, in government, governmental bodies, you don't, there's, the only way you can say, okay, go to the next step is, is to vote. I guess you could all nod, but then you're going to end up with people that said, well, you didn't really give them, you know, permission. You, you kind of halfway did it. So, you know, so it's, it's my opinion that anything that moves forward, moves through even, you know, RTM subcommittees, at certain points, you know, the leader of that committee will say, okay, do we have something we want to present to go to the next step? And, and, and that's, that makes a lot of sense. You know, a couple, you know, a couple comments on, you know, Selectman Dunbar and Representative Sires had mentioned about, hey, you know, what are the next steps? You know, I'd also like to see some of those laid out to say, okay, we're going to be advertising here, we're going to have a pub, you know, a couple of public meetings, that if it's going to be done by the group that put the work together to organize, then that's, that's, that should be who does it. And then, you know, people that want to get involved or people that want to make sure that people know that something is to get involved with, need to go and contact those people. I mean, we have our regular means of newspapers, radio, whatever. We all, we all do know that there is a list of people that don't know that something's happening, no matter what we do. So if we have people that want to reach out, make sure that they, they, they reach out. If it's RTM members that want to go do it, they're the best conduit to every neighborhood. Thank you.
I'm going to tell you something right now, Representative Ingraham. If I hadn't shown up at that meeting, I guarantee this discussion would not be happening, that this plan would have been put through as pretty much the plan of energy for the town of Branford. I think that Selectman Dunbar has it right on the head. Do not vote on this thing. Send it to the RTM, send it to the people in the community, and let's see how this really takes shape. Because in all respect to, Russ, Selectman Higgins, you know, the reality is this, that this plan was put in place with a very defined point of view. And there are people out there, I'd like to hear from these people if they're here or not, that would disagree with this plan entirely, entirely, saying that it's based on all the wrong fundamental assumptions. So what do you do? You start with a plan that is way out there on the left and think you're going to somehow pull it back to the middle? How's that going to happen?
Representative Sires, I have just a comment with, with one thing. They need a vote to go forward to do what? I thought we were just going to put this out and have community involvement, but it was just said they needed a vote to go forward to do their next phase. I just assumed the next phase was just public awareness. And that was why, I mean, I'm following that they need a vote to go forward. For what purpose? If the purpose is just to let the public know about this phase? And I did read it thoroughly, and the first paragraph, it said the majority of Branford support this. And that's what I'm trying, before we even go forward, I like to figure out this, this is a lot to digest. And I would like to see it out there through the proper channel to the community, maybe back to the Board of Selectmen with some input because it seems as though it shouldn't be stuck at this level. But, so my question, has there been any funds expended so far? It's a great plan. Who paid for it? Has it been funded? You need to go forward on a vote to do what is your next step? And how are we going to get this out to the community word of mouth? What are your plans? Or did you just want a yes vote tonight and say, okay, that's great, we're good, we did a good job? It is a good plan. I mean, it looks good. I, I just don't know if it's a good plan. So what is the purpose of tonight's vote? Can we just say, good job? Let's get it to the community and then come back and let's have a good vote and, and a fair vote, not a one-sided vote? It, that's, that's my comment. I'm enjoying the dialogue.
Okay. Yeah, just to clarify, no, it's not a vote for, and go out for public awareness. It's a, a vote to move forward and as stated, this would then be, we would engage the public, not for public awareness, for public input and engagement. Go ahead. We have a resident here who'd like to speak.
Dr. Shirley McCarthy, I would like a vote.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
I would like a vote on tonight, just to give us credibility to go forward with this document to the public. And we have multiple pronged plans, press releases, it'll be on the town website, we're going to have public meetings or Zoom meetings, depending on the COVID status. Social media, we have a student that helps us with social media, so there'll be Facebook, ads, everything. So we'll get plenty of input. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Another comment. I'd like to know from the first selectman, why are you pushing this through? I don't understand it. Why don't you just send it to the RTM, send it to the community? Because a vote by this Board of Selectmen tonight is going to be seen as some sort of an endorsement.
No.
No, but that's the way it's going to be interpreted. You can't say one.
First of all, it wouldn't go to the RTM because this was, body was, it was created, it doesn't, there's not an RTM.
Well.
If an RTM member, I, I welcome all the RTM members and I appreciate those that do, do stay engaged and are engaged on this tonight. But as far as, you know, I stated many times, why this is now before this body.
You know, I disagree completely. I'm going to tell you right now, I'm going to go on record that if, if I didn't walk into that meeting a couple of weeks ago, you would endorse this plan and that would be the end of it. I don't care what you say. You know that's.
Thank you. Is there any other comments?
Hi. Good evening, Elena Cahill. Wayne, I just want you to address a couple of your comments because you're saying things that are factually inaccurate. So the first thing is that we had several conversations and meets with people regarding public communication. And we knew that we had to bring this back to the Board of Selectmen before we could go out to the public. So your statement that it was not going to the public is completely inaccurate and is sort of misleading. The second comment I want to make is that there would be nothing to bring to the public because what's in here is factual data based on the usage of the town of Branford. The work that we did with no expense funded is to gather the usage for the town of Branford so that that information could be provided to the town of Branford. So when you look through the graphs and you look through the usage of the town of Branford and the breaking down of the data, it's not biased information, it's factual information. With that information, people can now make a decision, possibly have input, well, state that reversely, they can have input and possibly make decisions. But the other thing is that there's no commitment on this plan for anybody to do anything. It's talking about what constituents in the town can do, certainly not what anybody has to do. It's talking about resiliency. It's talking about protecting community buildings to be open. So I want this to be stated fairly for those who may not have had an opportunity to read this. This isn't a plan of action. There aren't actionable items in this plan. This is information that was gathered for the people of Branford so that they can use this information, learn from this information, and it's their information, it's the people of Branford's information. So unfortunately, I don't want this to get skewed in the sense where you're telling people that they were never going to the public and that is a biased committee. It's factual data obtained and collected to be put together to show people what is happening. Addressing costs is certainly a viable concern, and everyone is going to have the right to address costs. But in order to address the public, this first step had to be taken or else we would have nothing to hand them to say, look at the town of Branford, look at the usage for the people in the town of Branford. The people mean everybody, the community, the commercial community, the industrial community, the residential community, the municipal community. All that data is in here. That's what the town can now look at and have a communication and a conversation around. So please, don't pass along information that's not true or misleading. This was the entire committee. Thank you for the time.
Elena, here's the point, and I'll just be brief. This is put together by a committee in which every single member subscribes to man-made global war. Okay? Every single member. So right there, and it's already in your plan, that's the premise that you're basing the entire plan on. So you can't say it's not skewed because it's skewed right from the start. plan on. So you can't say it's not skewed, because it's skewed right from the start.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, sure.
Yep, Ed Graham, Montalvi Street in Branford. I have, uh, all kinds of questions and concerns. I'm not going to go through them at this moment, if we're going to have continued, uh, discussion. Um, first off, a little bit insulting, one of the early gentlemen that spoke, um, referred to the respectable citizens that had been spoken to. I find that a little bit, uh, whatever, you can figure that out. Um, I don't know who decides who that is. Um, and, and again, we're a community of what, 29,000 people? I stumbled into this whole thing. How many out of 29,000 people here even know of this? I think there's a handful of us. Why is that? And that's a question for whomever. You, anybody can answer.
Okay, I, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Graham. And I, and I actually, I appreciate you, um, staying engaged on this. Uh, you said you have several questions and comments, um, and I, I welcome that. And I'm not sure the comment you referred to about respectable, who made that, so I can't, can't address that. But, um, again, I, I, I just want to be clear, I do think that creating a, a, a plan, uh, I, for, for energy is, I think, in the interest, long-term interest of our community. Um, and I do feel, uh, that this is the first step. Um, and I, I, I do feel that it does require, and I state a lot, uh, uh, community engagement. And I appreciate, um, uh, Elena Cahill's comments that really put what this document, for those who haven't had the opportunity to review it, put it all into context and, uh, and I urge you, I, I do want to begin this, I think this is an initiative that the, uh, town should, uh, uh, take on and move forward. I think there's, uh, uh, any benefits to it. Um, and, and quite honestly, I think it's something that will be, serve the town long-term, uh, quite well.
Well, and that may be, it, it affects every individual and every family in this community, our beautiful town of Branford. And I'm just curious, though, how is the message going to get out to, to the residents? Again, I stumbled into it.
And so, so quite honestly, tonight is part of that. I mean, the, the reason why we're here is to have this presented publicly and to begin the public conversation. So, um, I, I appreciate the fact that, you know, there's, there's 28,000 plus residents in the town of Branford, and not everybody's following exactly what's going on or engaged. But we try to, uh, you know, get as much information out there as possible. And as I stated at the beginning of this presentation, that we would then, from this moving forward, we would then, uh, put this on the town website for all to view. We would, uh, begin a series of, uh, of public discussions and engagement. And this is a, a, a document that could then be, uh, further refined. But, but again, I think what is important is what Elena touched on. If anybody, you know, we hear that this is going to affect all of us, this is going to have an impact on, a financial impact, we heard, you know, this really, there are not, you know, actionable items, there's not a declaration, this, uh, uh, support by this board isn't mandating, uh, anything, uh, on its residents or even for the town to, to move upon. This is, is simply a, a guide on how to, uh, get there. And as I, I said, um, in the very beginning, in order for us to be successful in terms of achieving some of these goals or, or these goals, it's going to require, uh, businesses, residents, public citizens to, to, uh, to, you know, move forward with this. This isn't something that, you know, we could be successful by a mandate or declaration. And that's not something I would advocate. So what I really hope to get through for tonight, again, is to just begin the public discussion. As I said, this being created, so I'm going to put it forward as a motion. Okay, so I would put forward a motion that we continue, as the town of Branford, to fully, to develop a Branford Energy Plan.
Are you endorsing this plan? Are you voting for this plan tonight?
I'm, I'm, as I said, this is always the first step. This is to engage. If those who, who are, take the time to read it, and a lot of this is data, this is facts that are in here, that's what is in this plan, this 12-page, which is actually.
Well, some, some of it's debatable fact, Jamie, I'm sorry, but there is, there is some debatable fact, but.
May I say something that I think I'm going to clarify, Representative Sires? What you are saying is true. For those who choose to read the plan, it is information. However, I encourage the Board of Selectmen to review the Zoom recording, because the presenter of the plan made comments that if you don't support the plan, you are not being a good leader. He also made comments that it is going to require electric buses at purchase, because if not, then why would we be not specifically responsible? So reading the plan, if you endorse is one thing, but if you will listen to the Zoom of the presenter of the plan, subjective comments were made about the people, if they don't support the plan, subjective fiduciary responsibility comments were made about future purchases by supporting the plan. So we have two dichotomies, the written plan and the presented plan. And the problem is, if you do not get a one page on what the plan is, then we're going to have a problem with the community involvement, because the presenter of the plan was not the one who wrote the plan. So perhaps maybe we can review the Zoom, sit down with these people, and then put together one plan that is on the same page. Because I agree with the presenter, Cahill, I apologize if I got your name wrong, he stated it very clearly. But the presenter of the plan did not state it that way. And it's all factual, you can just listen to the Zoom, what, what, what was said and the comments that were made, with the gentleman making the comments. There was comments made about people don't support it. So we do have two different plans that we're talking about. I'm talking about the plan that was spoken and a little about the written, and the Board of Selectmen perhaps was talking about the written plan. But you do have, your committee that you picked presented a plan that made statements of financial responsibility and made statements against people who don't support the plan. So if you do vote on this tonight, you may be insulting people by, by the comments that were made about the people who don't support the plan. So maybe we can do another meeting to vote. I, I don't know, that's your decision now, but that's exactly how it came across to me.
I, I, I think what you're, what I think, what everybody has been saying, really, I mean, I don't think this is really required, uh, this much debate. We want it, I, I think, you know, there's been an acknowledgement that there's value to having an energy plan. There's been acknowledgement by many that have made comments that they would, uh, um, you know, recognizing that this needs to start somewhere. And, um, and there's acknowledgement that, uh, you, you, we should be doing further community engagement. Um, and I'm saying acknowledgement by the commenters and by the board. So I, that's what I put forward in the form of a motion, is that we would then begin to, the undertaking of a Branford Energy Plan.
That's fine.
Seconded, and I will.
One last, one last comment. Two say, one, the citizen didn't walk into that meeting, you would have no way continued the discussion. This would have been Branford's Energy Plan. First comment. Second comment is this, that if you vote on it tonight, and it was, and it's going to be seen as an endorsement, despite what you say, there's no caveats on your vote, then the solution, I believe, is just get a citizen's petition, bring this to the RTM, and that way we're guaranteed to, to, uh, continue the, the discussion. The representative, I'm sorry, Selectman Dunbar's point. That's fine. Go ahead and vote, you know, vote all you want. We'll just bring it to the RTM ourselves.
Okay, I'm not sure how that accomplishes.
I, I, I guess my comment about my vote, as I believe I'm, please correct me if I'm wrong, I'm voting on this plan being made public and brought to the public for input, and this is a non-binding plan, but this is the plan that you're going to bring there and then solicit information and input that has been brought up that may not have been given. Is that correct? Is that what I'm voting for?
Is it a draft? Excuse me?
It is a draft. My understanding, it is a draft. It's a living document. And I got that, and I got that information today. I verified that.
You call this a draft, I think we're okay with that at this point in time, if, if it's a draft.
Yep. Amen.
Living document. And, and it'll change, it's, it's, it's going to change based on input.
No, 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 it's a draft. Are you voting on, meaning a draft?
I'm voting on what I was told today was a draft.
I made a motion that the town will, will move with the creation of an energy plan. So that, we have a first step here, that's the motion. So to your point, Ray, and your comments, that this is a document that we are, what's coming out of this board right now, if successful with the vote, based on the motion, that we will then, uh, the town is endorsing this board, the fact that we are going to create a, a, uh, energy plan.
Is it a draft? Is it a draft?
This is a draft, according to what I got. Yes. Yes, I was told it's a draft framework, whatever you want to call it. But yes, it's, it's not the plan.
That's fine. Draft, we're okay, I think.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I, any other comments? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. And I will talk to IT to get this on the website as soon as possible. And I will, uh, talk to the committee, um, about beginning the, uh, public engagement. Now, obviously, it's, uh, with COVID and everything, it's difficult to, to, uh, large public hearings, but we'll do some, some, uh, outreach the best we can until things we are resumed to normal. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. All right, item 10, uh, reappointments. Economic Development Commission, Richard Swegley and Albert Canosa term to expire July 31st, 2023.
Second.
Moved second, all in favor, say aye. Okay, go ahead.
Comment is this, I'll make them fast, but I think that it has to be noted that the Economic Development Commission does not have any representative from the development community or the commercial realty, uh, uh, real estate, uh, community. You know, I won't go on and on about this, but these are two fine members of the community, I know them both. But you've got to start looking to put people on this EDC, the Economic Development Commission, that actually know how development works. And you don't have it. Put people on there, like, go energy or whatever, well, that's fine. But what about someone or a couple of people that actually know the development process, that know, you know, commercial real estate, that know economics of a small town that, you know, as it relates to development? You don't do that. And I mean, with all respect to the people on there, you don't have one single person, not one single person, on that Economic Development Commission that understands development. I'm sorry, they just don't. And I've been to many, 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 many meetings. And you want to know what's even worse? They don't want to understand development. They really don't. I mean, I brings things up that I think are very germane to this discussion, and they just ignore it. Why? Because it's inconvenient. So go ahead and appoint these two guys, they're two good guys, but don't think for a minute they're bringing anything to the commission, because they're not.
Okay. I'll just, uh, put it out there once again, if anybody's interested in, in, uh, to serve on any boards or commissions, uh, please put your name forward. And you can also contact your, uh, your town committee, your respective town committee. All right, uh, all in favor, say aye. Conservation and Environmental Commission, Dan Fitzgerald term to expire July 31st, 2023. Carol Lee Hall term to expire July 31st, 2024. Adrian Bonenberger term to expire July 31st, 2024.
Move it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, seconded by Selectman, Selectman Higgins. Uh, discussion, hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Appointments, Conservation and Environmental Commission, Peter Yates to fill a vacancy left by Eleanor Solis, terms to, term to expire July 31st, 2024.
Second.
Move second, discussion, hearing now, all in favor, say aye. Planning and zoning alternate, Massimo Legori, uh, to fill a vacancy left by Dave Dyer, term to expire October 31st, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved, seconded, discussion, hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 12, to consider and if appropriate, approve the following proclamation. Centennial proclamation declaring August 2020 as National Women's Suffrage Month in celebration, recognition, and honor of the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution. Whereas the bold, courageous, and powerful women who fought for the ratification of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution on Aug- August 26th, 1920, deserve special celebration, especially on the 100th anniversary of its ratification in 2020. And whereas the right to vote is the cornerstone of our democracy and the fundamental right upon which all our civil liberties rest. And whereas the 19th Amendment did not, did not, I got it, sorry, lights are off. Did not guarantee suffrage to all women, including Native Americans, who did not gain the right to vote until 1924, or Asian Pacific Islander Americans, it was 1952, African American and Latin Americans suffered voter suppression until the passage of the Voting Rights Act of 1965 and 1975. And whereas the fact that today, women are active in local, state, and national government and are running for office in unprecedented numbers reminds us that we all follow in the footsteps of these resolute American suffragists. And whereas the 19th Amendment of the United States Constitution has played an important role in advancing the right of all women. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the town of Branford hereby recommend that all citizens and civic institutions honor the role of the ratification of the 19th Amendment in further promoting the core values of our democracy as promised by the Constitution of the United States, reaffirm the opportunity for students and adults in the county to learn about the, remember, the, I'm sorry, and commemorate the efforts of the women's suffrage movement and the role of the women in our democracy, and reaffirm our desire to continue to strengthen the democratic participation and to inspire future generations to cherish and preserve the historic precedent established under the 19th Amendment.
Motion.
Second.
Moved the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the town will be having, uh, August 26th, a ceremony noon on the front, uh, steps of Town Hall, to welcome, uh, Selectmen and any others to, um, uh, Witness will have some speakers there. So that'll be noon on August 26th. Thank you. Okay. Any other business?
A couple things for Selectmen. I'm going to keep it short, because this meeting went on a lot longer than I think anyone anticipated. And, uh, Trista has a few slides. I wonder if we can just look at this. I'll, I'll keep this under five minutes. Probably won't even go that long. Just want to go over a couple of quick things, and then I'll just be done with it. We can discuss it next meeting. So, um, you know, this is the Tabor property. I just wanted, you can go through them, Trista, if you wouldn't mind. I just wanted to call to the board's attention that there was a number of things proposed. Next slide, please, Trista. This is the ball fields that were proposed down there at one point. You see the public works which got nixed, but this gives a community an idea of what some of the possibilities were. And it's not going to ever happen if we keep giving that property away. The next slide, please. This is J.C. Wyatt's idea of a golf course, which I think had a lot of potential. I think it might still, you know, quite frankly. So the next slide is the same thing. I think it's a great consideration for that piece. And again, if you keep giving it away for labyrinths and tree farms and, you know, hiking trails and everything else, we're never going to even have an opportunity to do it. So we can revisit that in the future. The next issue is, excuse me, next slide, please, Trista. I think it's coming up. Trista, do you have the second set of slides?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you can't see them because I can see them on my screen.
I don't see the second slide.
No. All right, hold on, give me a second. Can you see them now?
Yes.
All right, just to, you know, just to revisit this quickly, I mean, that's, this issue was still out there, will continue to be out there, be in front of the RTM in the next month or so, so we can pass on this for the time being. Same with the Medlin piece, that will be before the RTM, but as you can see, serious problem down there, which I directly place on the shoulders of the Branford Land Trust. Next, please, Trista. This is a little bit more about the Medlin pieces, the catwalk that they built to take down, that they figured they had to take the berm down. There's an aerial view of the catwalk, which will all be before the RTM. Next, please. And these are the three individuals that I think have to stay accountable for what they did to Jay Medlin, you know, Peter Raymond, the president of Land Trust, Bill Horn, and John Lust, who were in charge of the catwalk project and really received no permits that they needed. And I think, you know, my opinion, I think it's, you know, it's a valid opinion, acted terribly, terribly irresponsible. But, you know, we'll bring that up again. The other thing is too, this is another issue that's coming up here, and I'm getting more and more aware of it. There are serious problems, serious problems with Parkside Village. And I went to one of the meetings of the Branford Housing Authority, you know, I must, I must have been to a few hundred at least meetings in the last many years. That was the worst, you know, commission or authority. I mean, it wouldn't let citizens speak or anything. And I came away saying, you know, what are you, what are you covering up here, guys? Because you're going to let people ask questions and speak. And there's a real concern down there that things perhaps, you know, as serious as fraud and embezzlement and cover-up are going on. So this too is going to be brought before the RTM, but again, I wanted to call it to the Board of Selectmen's attention, please. Again, is there any further development on this investigation that apparently, I know Selectman Dunbar has been asking to see the letter. Is there any, any word on that?
As we discussed at our last meeting, I'm trying to arrange a meeting with the attorneys and the board, and we'll have it.
How hard is that to do?
They haven't, they haven't, weren't available. This has been a tough month.
All right, well, can we expect it the next meeting? Because that'll give you a month.
Yeah, I hope so.
You know, forgive me, but I won't hold my breath because I don't even let her exist, okay? This is just more continuation of it. And then, next slide, Trista, same thing, same, you know, next slide, same thing, we've been over that.
Yep.
And then, same thing, we've been over that. It'll come before the RTM, much as it can be. I just ask people to go to our website, branfordfraud.com, and see more information on this. That's it, thank you.
Okay, I guess just in the interest of everybody's time, for all those slides, you can probably refer back to July 22 meeting for response on those slides. They were the same that were presented, other than the.
I'll bring them up again in the next meeting when we have more time, okay?
Okay, yeah, thanks, have a good night. I think we have one more. Shirley McCarthy, I'd like to address the board.
...by thanking you, the first selectman, for all your positive and constructive. I want to. Is it green now? Can you hear me?
No, green.
It is green. Okay. Like I said, I want to thank you for all your positive and constructive support as well as your ready availability. I want to acknowledge how hard you work for this town and also for your impeccable honesty and integrity. Thank you very much, Jamie Cosgrove.
Thank you.
But I just want to say, I just want to thank, you know, we're fortunate in Branford to have great people working for this town. As you, throughout the meeting, I acknowledged those department heads and their departments for the great work they've done. But also, one thing, I think, I just want to take a moment, the amount of volunteers that serve on various boards and commissions who serve this town, that really make it a great town. So I'd just like to publicly thank you and everybody that serves. Thank you. Yes, you can.
Second.
So move the second, that's non-debatable.
Thank you.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you, good night.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.